Did you see that we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we do have a quorum, sir.
Having a quorum, then I declare this meeting underway. At this time, I'd like to ask our development, the great director of our development department, that would be Mr. Lonnie Waters, if he would lead us in a moment of prayer.
Lord, we'd just like to thank you for all of our blessings we receive every day. Lord, we'd ask you to watch over the sick. Just got a report of a friend who is having heart trouble. Lord, we ask you to bless her. Lord, as we go through this meeting, Lord, and through the rest of this week and this year, Lord, I ask you to bless our states around us who's having tragedies. Lord, we'd just like to give you the praise for all the good things. Watch over us during this meeting. Amen.
Council member Faust, would you lead us in our pledge of allegiance too?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty
with liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, you have the agenda in front of you. I believe it's been mailed out to all. And at this time, I would entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented to us.
Make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
And I need a second, please.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented in a discussion by council. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The agenda is adopted. We have also delivered to each council member the approved minutes of the February the 1st, 2021 regular council meeting. And at this time, I would entertain a motion that we adopt those minutes as submitted.
So moved.
A second, please. Motion to adopt in a discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Same, and the minutes are adopted. Under own business, our first item of discussion is consideration of ordinance number 2020-29 and 2020-30, request of rezonement and annexation of parcel number JA08042 and JA08042.001 at 855 North Main to R3, and this would be an annexation into the city of Jasper. And Brandon and Lonnie will bring this to us. Brandon, if you will, please, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, counsel and for the public. Thank you. And just to kind of back it up, just to kind of give a little history and a recap of where we were. This journey began November 24th before our planning and zoning commission, whereupon the applicant had a public hearing before the planning and zoning commission to request to annex and rezone. Once again, this is an initiative where they are requesting to annex into the city. And by virtue of the fact that the county and the city have different zoning categories, we do have to assign it some sort of zoning designation. So as the agenda item reads, your consideration tonight is to rezone it into what would be some sort of comparable land use designation that the applicant could perhaps develop the property with. As such, it was assigned the R3 single-family residential. And then the annexation portion is, you know, annexed in at the R3. So this particular item was discussed at the February 1 meeting, whereupon I think there was some issues relative to, I guess, comprehending the land use designation. We did go through the staff analysis, and it is compatible land use. And staff is favorable of this application. The matter was tabled on February 1, and direction was received for staff to reach out to the applicant and his, I guess, representatives. And we did so on February the 17th. And I believe the applicant and his representatives are on the Zoom call. In fact, the conclusion of this synopsis, the mayor wants to recognize them just to affirm that I think that staff had a very positive meeting with the applicant and articulated that the staff's position is still that this property is, I guess, eligible for annexation to the city. The R3 single-family with conditions attached would be favorably viewed by staff. And albeit it is a little more dense than perhaps some of the neighbors had expressed during the public hearing. But once again, we were just trying to find a land use that would be, I guess, compatible with our own land use designation. So what you have tonight before you is essentially to annex, bring this property into the city limits and assign it an R3 zoning designation. This is conditional in so much as we would want to make sure that if this is favorably received and annexed into the city, then the applicant would be required before any land disturbance activities occurs to present a site plan that is in compliance with the R3 zoning standards. So for purposes of tonight, staff advised the applicant that it was not a requirement dating back to November 24th, when the applicant submitted the application. There is no requirement at this juncture to submit a site plan, although those standards have changed as of the 1st of the year. He is under no requirement at this time. If he accepts the R3 with the conditions, then it would be a second reading on the April meeting, whereupon he may want to submit a site plan for review and consideration and approval. If not, he can submit any time thereafter for another council meeting. And once again, we would process it to make sure that it meets the square foot of the lot size, house size, setback, making sure the conditions are met. So with that, I was trying to summarize quite a few months' worth of work in a very short period of time. So if I've missed anything, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Brandon. And I'm assuming that, Sherri, you have the owners there also of this property. Ms. Martin, can you hear? Sherri, Martin, can you? Can anyone there hear us?
Yeah. Okay. Can you hear us now? Yes.
And so at this point, I want to make certain that everyone understands that what we're doing is this is an annexation into the city just as explained. And that this is the first reading of that. We'll have another next month. And then any site plan that you were to submit would fit in with our R3. And is that your understanding that we have with our, with you and with the owners?
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
Okay. So at this point, then, counsel, you have heard what is said. I would entertain a motion to approve this as submitted.
I make a motion that we annex it into the city and rezone it as a R3, conditional to the site plans that we're going to need to go forward.
So we have a motion to annex, conditioned with, of course, submission of a site plan that would be approved by our development department. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion by council at this time?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
So it's my understanding that we have a motion on the table that is in support of the rezoning annexation as stated in the ordinance. And specifically, this is for detached single family, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. Just to be clear, what were the did you say, what's condition? What exactly are your conditions again?
It would be an approved site plan that would be detached, single-family dwellings.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify for the applicant, as we had discussed at the 17th, what staff would be recommending and what is laid out in the proposed ordinance is that the mayor and council would review a site plan that's reflected upon the appropriate land use of R3. Because we do not know that particular density number, it is driven by an actual site plan and the configuration of the lot sizes, as well as the stipulations associated with our development standards, which is just standard practice in development projects that any land engineer or site plan developer will know these basic requirements. The only thing that we did clarify for the applicant and at the time, there was a little bit of disagreement between staff and the applicant. But I think he acquiesced at the end that we would be looking for a 50-foot string buffer. And I think at the time, in the overall scheme of things, he expressed to us that that's perhaps not that major of an issue. So I did want to at least clarify those particular points just to ensure that, you know, he doesn't have any sort of issues he'd like to express.
Right.
Right, the string buffer, you're right. We did talk about that. And we're, I don't think that negatively impacts us so much that we can't make the project work. We also, we could talk about the other things we talked about on the 17th, maybe on the square footage lots, sort of thing. To make sure we're all on the same page.
At this point, I have a motion and a second to annex this into our city with the stipulations that have been made so far. And all in favor, is there any further discussion by council on this matter?
Yeah.
If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And that motion is carried unanimously and annexed into our city.
Thank you very much. We appreciate this.
Thank you. Item B, consideration of ordinance number 2021-03 for the requested deannex parcel number 0292B098, located at 677 Lumber Company Road from the city of Jasper. Brandon, we're going to get some in, and we're going to let some go back out.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and counsel, you may recall, last meeting, we had this agenda item for your consideration. At the time, there was no issues relative to your approval. However, procedurally, I had never done a deannexation before. So Mr. Seifan had taken appropriate actions to educate us on the proper way, the legal way. Since that time, the county has approved a resolution that is in your packet, which is reflective of them accepting all the parcel back in, although it had not ever left the county. If this property is deannexed, there would be an associated land use assigned to it by the county, since it would be going from the city to the county. There are no services affected, once again, relative to they're not on sewer. And additionally, they would not be creating an island with this deannexation. So as such, the procedural matters have been accomplished. The resolution and the accompanying city ordinance is in your packet. And if this is considered, there'd be the second reading, final consideration at the April meeting.
So counsel, I'd entertain a motion to deannex this parcel as described. And this will be the first reading of deannexation.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 2021-03 for deannexation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carried unanimously. Item C would be consideration approval of the term sheet for the United Community Bank from the Solicitation of Banking Services for the USDA WPCP expansion and for the mayor, mayor pro temp and city manager to execute necessary documents as approved by the city attorney. And we'll let Beverly rapidly explain this to us, if you would, please, Beverly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our February meeting, we brought to you that we would be going out for proposal for the required construction loan financing for the water pollution control plant expansion project. We put an ad in the paper that ran the 11th, 18th, and the 25th. We opened bids or proposals that day and did receive one, sorry, from the United Community Bank. We received what's called a term sheet. This is not an agreement in such because there are things that they require. But it is for a Texas bank qualified rate of interest set at 1.44%. We would need to get approval of the closing attorney and the lender's ability to receive the attorney's opinion letter approving the Texas rate structure, which will not be a problem. The loan will be set on 24-month, non-revolving term. We make interest-only payments on what we have drawn down for construction monthly. And the loan is subject to lender receiving a commitment letter from USDA to pay off loan upon fund out of loan availability allocated for the project. So there are things that we are working on to get together for the bank and for the USDA to get an official agreement. But this is a favorable term, and I ask for your approval to go forward with this.
Counsel, at this point, I'd entertain a motion authorizing our city to go forward with this process to obtain these terms.
Aye.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Item D is consideration and approval of accepting the bid of $86,098 from Nelson Tractor for purchasing two track hoes and a trailer for the Water Waste Water Department from 2020's lost and G for deferral proceeds for an amount not to exceed $90,000. And we will ask Lindsay to bring this to us.
Good evening, mayor and council. As you recall, last month, we asked to put out for bid for two track hoes for the water department. We opened bids on February 18th. We received two bids, one from Nelson, one from Bobcat of Atlanta. Nelson did meet our specifications of what we wanted, and they came in at $86,098. And we're just asking if you would allow us to go ahead and proceed in buying these track hoes from Nelson Tractor.
Counsel, I entertain a motion that we approve the bid as submitted from Nelson Tractor Company to proceed with this purchase.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Ms. Lindsay, you and April, see.
Thank you.
Item E is consideration approval of accepting the bid of $36,318 from Core and Main for purchasing water pipe for the necessary inventory from 2020 bond proceeds for an amount not to exceed $50,000. And Lindsay, would you tell us what project this is going to be used on?
Yes, mayor. As you recall, last month, too, we asked for, to put out bid for supplies for the 136 water line project. But as you'll see later in your packet, that's going to change. It looks like it's going to be better if we let the county lead on that project. But we're asking if we could still purchase some 8-inch pipe to be used for projects as we move along with that line. They, the water department thinks they're going to need, you know, to have that in stock to replace or expand the line. So you have in your packet the bids that we received, and this is just for the pipe. However, the amount is a little bit more than what is shown in the bid, but because other accessories were added in with that. But we are just asking for, to purchase pipe. So, but we would like to not exceed $50,000, which we should be below that, no problem.
Counsel, I entertain a motion that we approve the purchase of this not to exceed $50,000.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
So just to be, so I'm clearing my mind because I think last month I was still a little bit confused. This is separate and completely separate now from the 136. This is for supply and inventory. And of course, we'll address, hopefully, address the 136 project later. So is that correct, Lindsay?
Yes, you're going to address the 136 project later in the agenda. But this is for just inventory. But I think they're going to need some of this as they're working on, not the 136 water line project, but some of our lines that'll connect on into that. Brandon, can you clarify just a little bit better? But it's mostly going to be inventory.
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries, and we will get to that part. Item F is consideration approval of accepting the bid of $41,847.55 from the Pro Pump Solutions for purchasing necessary components of a list station at Whirlly Crossroads Development Project. Cost to purchase to be expensed from the 2020 bond proceeds for an amount not to exceed $55,000, which is included in the purchasing and the staff install. Brandon, if you would, please.
Mr. Mayor, counsel and for the public, and Mr. Seifan, the mayor and city clerk have done a good job keeping us off the agenda so they can move this along quite nicely. So it's not going to slow it down too much. Needless to say, this particular item, you may recall, was something that was unique in so much as we would be utilizing our services or we'd have to sub out an electrician or someone. Vendors have a tendency to want to supply the equipment. And then that way, what they'll basically do is bring it, I'll dumb it down for myself, bring it on a truck, set it off the truck, then leave. And then we would come in and finish the components of the install and/or sub out. So that is why there's a discrepancy because there are some unknown costs that we would incur, albeit with Mr. Hall and his crew, they always try to minimize. This is for the development at Whirlly Crossroads, the residential project of about 124 units. You may recall that we were moving forward with getting water and sewer. And so this is just the obligatory list station that we would be installing. And thus far, it has been engineered by Turnip Seed. And so the Pro Pump basically was the only vendor that bid. And I think they had actually spoken with Turnip Seed to make sure that they submitted what was, I guess, designed or would be proper. And to Mr., Dr. Proctor's point a moment ago, oftentimes, what I try to do from a record-keeping perspective and for finance is although there may be some overlap at times with monies, we try to segregate the monies as best we can. So you'll see in the last item and this item, we are taking it out of the bond proceeds that, you may recall, we were able to realize with the bond refinancing. So we've got some monies that is stored away that doesn't affect our fund balance from water or operational. So these are monies that we identified last year that we'd be able to pursue some of these projects without, you know, affecting our 2021 budget.
Did you just say that we planned ahead and took some money to plan for keeping our infrastructure and inform and shake? Did I just hear that?
Yes, sir. Y'all did a good job.
Thank you, heard that, Dr. Proctor. So counsel, at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve accepting this bid up to and not exceeding $65,000.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion by council?
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
The invitation for bid, if you notate in your packet, is 2021-03. I do not want that on the record being confused with the previous item for ordinance number 2021-03. So if we would just notate that.
Got it. Thank you, sir. Good catch. Any further discussion by council? It is unusual, by the way.
Well, I was the one that made the motion on the last, so I figured.
Okay. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Item G is a review of development plans for Phase 1 of Gateway at Grandview. Brandon and Lonnie, if you would, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, counsel, I did want to make sure that since many of us were not around in October of 2018, I felt compelled to educate myself on some previous minutes, which lacked a little bit of substance with regards to what direction I needed to be pursuing relative to this particular project. But needless to say, you'll recall that the planned unit development on 515 Gateway at Grandview, the Phase 2, which is having the buildings being erected at this moment, they're going forward, that is Phase 2. Phase 1 would be the southernmost portion of the property that's having some dirt work moving forward, land disturbance permit. The Phase 1, if you will, has some commercial out parcels along with some additional, I guess, townhomes or duplexes, or they're trying to create a village of, I guess, a senior living village with some independent living. And this Phase 1 has an assisted living component to it. And I just told the developer that although I would not be seeking out a particular approval per se, based upon, I think, the meeting from October of 2018, this is to inform you all, as well as to the general public, that they, you know, there's been a lot of questions about where they're doing, where they're at. This is Um, this is, uh, a copy of the site plan, uh, this is five fifteen. The Phase Two project is over here. This is the Phase One overall parcel, um, where they have some potential commercial out parcels. This has not been solidified if it's going to be some townhomes or some, uh, duplexes or quads. Um, this particular area here is what is the, um, assisted living facility. Uh, they do have those plans into the Fire Marshal, uh, and the state. Uh, once the state Fire Marshal, uh, reviews them, they will be reviewed by Lonnie's department, um, our Fire Marshal. Uh, so for all intents and purposes, they are getting close to, um, I guess, submitting the architecturals for approval and the full building permits to begin the Phase One aspect, which will have several different components. And what I've advised, um, Mr. Ledford, um, is just to continue to keep us informed. And, um, they have done a good job at just advising us what's going on so that we could then in turn, uh, just kind of let you all know since this was a relatively new concept of, of, um, the PUD, uh, this one in the Piedmont, um, I guess, October twenty-eighteen. So, um, with that, don't know if Lonnie has anything else to add or any questions?
The only thing they, they're going to build a building for the assisted living in two, uh, stages. The first stage is going to be around fifty thousand square feet. The second stage will be, one of the wings off of it, will be over ten thousand. So this, this building is going to be, uh, about sixty-two, sixty-three thousand square feet, something like that. And it's going to house, uh, I think eighty-four, eighty-five beds. So this is, they're really looking forward to get this thing moving.
Okay, and thank you for that update. Under new business, we have consideration of ordinance number twenty-two-one dash zero four for amending Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances as it pertains to Article Five, Division Three and Four. Boy, I'm not going to let Brandon be the one to bring this to us.
And you're going to see me pop this over to Mr. Seifert in just a moment, but I'm going to give you kind of my bureaucratic layman's terms. Um, we, um, recognize that with the zoning, uh, approval, the final approval, February the one, there were some aspects of the zoning ordinance that, uh, basically spell out how we're going to do business as a body, as a planning and zoning, um, and or mayor and council. So Chapter Two, um, that isn't directly involved with our zoning ordinance, but our city code of ordinances, uh, needs to be amended, modified, uh, to basically coalesce or to bring about how we do business with regards to ordinance. So I think it specifically pertains to the, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, since the Planning and Zoning Board will now be the advisory, uh, commission to the mayor and captain, who ultimately will, uh, make those various decisions. Um, but I'll let Mr. Seifert give a little bit of a legal, uh, to make sure I didn't totally botch that.
No, uh, Mr. Douglas got all that completely right. Basically, within the Jasper Code of Ordinances, there was a section dealing with administrative boards and including that section were provisions as to the Planning Commission and as to the Board of Justice. And so, uh, when we re-bought the zoning ordinance, um, our consultant recommended that we, uh, change that part of the Jasper Code to make the Jasper Code consistent with, uh, the new zoning ordinance. And so basically, uh, most of the ordinance is just saying, hey, we're amending our code of ordinances to adopt what's coming up here on Exhibit One. And that Exhibit One is to make the Planning Commission consistent with what's stated in our zoning ordinance. So, uh, it's just sort of, uh, dotting the i's and crossing the t's to be sure that our code reflects what's in our zoning ordinance. And, um, so I'll be glad to answer any questions, but that's basically the purpose behind this, uh, ordinance.
Counsel, I'm going to be a little precise in reading this slowly so that we definitely get this where, as it enters the record, it will be correct. Consideration of ordinance number twenty-two-one dash zero four, amending Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances as it pertains to Article Five, Division Three and Four. At this time, I would entertain a motion that we approve this.
Make a motion, we approve twenty-two-one dash zero four as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve as presented.
This is first reading.
This is the first reading. We will get past that particular point at some time, but we're not there yet. Thank you for, um, for that, sir. So at this time, I would entertain a motion. I have the motion, I have a second, and, uh, any further discussion by council? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Close saying, and the motion is adopted unanimously. Item B is consideration and approval of the expenditure of not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the joint city-county SLOSS project or the one thirty-six project for which funding is available from our twenty-twenty SLOSS proceeds. And as I think Brandon has, had spoke to this previously, then this is where, um, the one thirty-six project comes up. So I'll ask, um, Dr. Sonny Proctor and Brandon if they will bring this to us.
I'll, I'll let Brandle, Brandon handle the, uh, intricate details, but, uh, just want to be, make sure the council is mindful that, um, this is a true partnership between our county and our city, um, to bring, um, uh, probably the most precious resource that we, uh, can have in our county and city, water. Um, and for us to be partner on this is tremendously exciting. We've had some great meetings, uh, over the last, really, I think in June is when we first, uh, told Brandon that he needed to go out and start working with our neighbors about, uh, better partnering together. And this is in relatively short order, in my opinion, a pretty significant accomplishment. And, um, uh, it's been a long time coming, so. Having said that, I'll turn it back over to Brandon and let him wrap up the specifics and we can move ahead.
Brandon?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you, Dr. Proctor. Uh, back in January, staff had met with, uh, new chairman, uh, commissioner, um, Chris Stansel. Um, we had obviously begun, uh, working towards arriving at some sort of, uh, community project, uh, specifically, uh, this jointly funded SLOSS project replacing the water line. Um, uh, it was favorable received in February and requested, uh, for us to bid out half the, uh, water line. However, in speaking with the county, we, to, um, everyone's benefit, if they take the lead, uh, they've secured, uh, supplies. And essentially what we would, tomorrow, if this is approved, we would cut them a check of about eighty-five thousand. Um, and that should, uh, be close to all we would need to do ever, as with anything, the use of our one subsurface and, uh, the things. So we're seeking out a hundred and fifty, um, really hoping to cap our exposure at about a hundred thousand, uh, max. Um, the county has had it engineered, the county, uh, has been doing handover for GDOT. Um, but we just want a little extra, uh, since we had budgeted some SLOSS money in twenty-twenty-one. Um, so, uh, ultimately our goal was to protect those SLOSS money, but didn't want to be in the midst of the project and there was a, uh, an agreed-upon change and not have the ability to move quickly. So, um, at this moment, we will be in check for about eighty-five thousand tomorrow and, uh, hopefully limited.
Thank you, Brandon. Counsel, at this ti, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the expenditure of not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the joint city-county SLOSS project for our one thirty-six, uh, project.
No move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Close saying, and the motion carries. Item C is consideration and approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Jasper and Pickett County as it pertains to the use of property in that city park. I think I've had a discussion with each one of you about this at one time or another. And what we're basically going to do is, and I'll let Brandon explain the specifics, but we're going to enter, enter into this IGA and in, in, uh, recognition of the program that the county has, which is much more robust than ours, that allow the use of our fields on a yearly basis under this IGA. And, uh, it would be, um, something that each year would be, uh, renewable. Uh, and I would be happy to see children back out there playing on our fields. So if you will, Brandon, please explain, explain the, the specifics of this, if I can get it out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, uh, and Mr. Seifert sometimes makes me look really smart where, where otherwise I don't know what he's talking about, but I'll, uh, hit some of the highlights and then he can talk about the legalities. Um, basically what this means is our two, um, ball fields at City Park, what I would call the upper lower, um, are being underutilized at this point since, uh, J Y S A's program, uh, doesn't have a kind of a organized, um, I guess, ball team. And there has been some questions in the past about, um, can the fields be utilized, uh, what's the dynamics, the relationships? And part of my position has been ultimately, uh, I have not gotten budgeted resources to really, uh, give those fields across the country what they need. So a couple of weeks ago, the chairman Stansel and I were, were meeting and he advised me that the county had a need for ball fields. Uh, we happen to have ball fields, uh, um, you know, we can hit it with a mower, but beyond that, uh, we don't have any training staff and we don't have any, uh, real budgeted resources to give it a go and even be utilized regularly in terms of scheduling and or, uh, making sure that even in the midst of the pandemic, we have some sort of staff that would make sure we're trying to follow the executive order. So we would retain ownership of the fields, county would, uh, bring it under their maintenance and, um, they would not alter the fields, not any sort of prior consent. Uh, we would not inhibit their ability to use recreational for, well, not just baseball or softball, but anything. But being mindful that if, um, after a couple of years, if they no longer need the space or need to use it, uh, it will revert back to the city, uh, in a condition, uh, equal to or greater than the way that it counted. So from a, a partnership perspective, I think they have the resources that can, um, uh, really utilize the field given the maintenance it needs, uh, bring people, uh, downtown, um, and, uh, highlight the hundred thousand plus investment, um, in our parks equipment, playground equipment, and will continue to be making investments in City Park with tennis courts and other, other things. So, uh, I'll let Mr. Seifert hit on some of the, uh, specifics. Other than I did not want anyone in, uh, the city of, to think that this was going to be our guarantee to use the asset. Uh, this is something that the county would be managing, uh, and ultimately is public property that if it's not being utilized and if someone wanted to go out and play catch, um, while it was just sitting dormant, um, it would not be restrictive. Um, the IGA is written in so much as it's a pretty good deal for this. Um, the county would pick up basically, have on the lights and all the maintenance, the dirt in the field, the ants and, uh, even the garbage. Um, not to say that we would be a great partner and good neighbor and help out as needed, um, but I just could not see, um, a downside to this. And talking to the chairman today, um, his, uh, attorney had reviewed it and they didn't find any issues either. So, um, but that, Mr. Seifert?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Douglas. Uh, basically, uh, an intergovernmental agreement is just a contract between two government entities. And basically, as, uh, Mr. Douglas indicated, our contract will let county, uh, have the potential of using the ball field, uh, in the park for ten years. Uh, but every year it comes up for renewal. So every year the council can look at the situation again and decide, um, whether to continue the intergovernmental agreement or not, or whether the city has some, uh, better use, uh, for that area. So, um, I think it's a good agreement from the viewpoint that hopefully the county will use the fields and maximize their use for recreational purposes, but we don't lose all our control over our property in that every year we get a chance to evaluate where we are and whether we want the agreement continued. And of course, with the ten-year agreement, that gives the county the opportunity that if they want to or, or deem that it would be good for both the city and county, they could improve the fields, you know, they could put in new lights, they could put in a concession stand or anything else to make the fields more usable. And again, under the contract, uh, the city council gets to approve permanent improvements because they're building it on our property. But the contract contemplates that if it's for, you know, the recreational purposes that we would not be unreasonable in withholding our consent. Um, basically, they pay rent to us of a dollar, but they've got to maintain the fields. They've got to, um, be responsible, like, they put up lights, they're responsible for the power bill. Uh, if they water the fields, they're responsible for the water charges. And as the city manager indicated, uh, they also are responsible for solid waste pickup. So, uh, but like you said, you know, we'll be glad to help them, but at least the contract, um, puts that responsibility at least initially on the county, which again, I think is reasonable because you're only charging them a dollar for the use of the field for the entire year. Um, so hopefully this will be a win-win situation where the fields will get used more, the county will have new fields. county will have new fields to help with their recreational program. And of course, the children and kids in the cities participate in that program too. So it ought to be a good thing for everybody. And those are the main provisions, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Counsel, you heard the conversation and at this point, I would entertain a motion that we would approve the IGA between the City of Jasper and Pickens County for the use of our city parks.
Motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement as to recreational services.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve any discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Hey, I'd like to take a brief moment and just recognize Councilman Faust for his many years of service to the JYSA and taking care of our kids and looking after that program. And I really hope that this is just a continuation of that and maybe even something more as we move forward with our more partnerships with our county. Mr. Faust, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Dr. Proctor. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And I think that all of council will recognize, will echo those same sentiments. And I did have a good discussion, a long discussion with Councilman Faust because I needed his opinion on this. And I want to thank every one of you. I can't tell you how much it means to me personally, but I admit that I do have a soft spot for jewelry. So, thank you all. Any further discussion by counsel? Item E is consideration of the request for the Boys and Girls Club to utilize the area at Lee Newton Park, the parking lot area, I think for this particular one, for a single event on May the 14th. And I have on this Brandon to bring it here. And I believe Cassie Rasko is present with us.
Yes, sir. The famous.
You skipped D.
Letter D.
I beg your pardon?
You skipped D.
I skipped D.
Mm-hmm.
Well, there probably was a reason for that.
He was tired of hearing me talk.
Oh, okay. Let's see, we can round Brandon on this one, folks. Item D, item D is consideration of approval of, wow, modifications to the City of Jasper pay scale reflect the positions in administration and development departments. I bet our new employee Stacy Johnson would not appreciate me skipping that tip from one, as well as the development department. So if you will, Brandon.
Yes, sir. And just for counsel and for the public, you'll see at times, change is the only constant in so much as we'll have continual updates and modifications of various things. We don't just merely set it and forget it. So the pay scale, when we have recently had a couple of new hires that were budgeted positions, you may recall last year, we adopted a pay scale and Beverly and Lindsay and Stella at times will keep me in check in so much as we hire an HR generalist to fill the needs of the department, but there isn't an associated, I think, pay range. And then hiring a new building inspector slash development specialist that their pay isn't reflective of what's on the pay scale. And so just to be truly transparent, they do a good job of saying, hey, we need to make sure that we put things before counsel. That is what we're doing. The way we're operating is the way that's within the parameters. So with that, Beverly, I don't know if you have anything specifically, I think in the packet, we did highlight the pay scale. But beyond that, that would be, that would be all I have to say.
I don't have anything to add. I was just going to remind counsel that on September 14th last year, we did approve the pay scale. And this was just, like you said, a slight amendment to it, staying within our budgeted personnel, but wanted to put the job description out there for you all to see.
Thank you. Counsel, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve these two modifications to the City of Jasper's pay scale.
Make a motion to adjust the pay scale as highlighted.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Well, can I come back to my request for the Boys and Girls Club? So at this time, we do have a request from the Boys and Girls Club to utilize the area at Lee Newton Park for a single event on May the 14th. And Brandon and Cassie Rasko, if you will, please bring this to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel and for the public, although we are still in a pandemic recognized and I think we have some positives associated with the. It's my job at times to try to speculate and figure out, look at my crystal ball, so to speak, but I don't necessarily have one with respect to the public health state of emergency that we're in, albeit that I do realize that we had authorized back in November the event to be scheduled and to be held March the 13th. That's the Shamrock Stroll. Staff has met with the organizers of that event and it does appear as though that they have got good measures in place that's consistent with the governor's executive order. So one of the items that staff would be requesting that as the mayor and council consider various events for 2021, that we would ask that each of the organizers be mindful of working with us on ensuring compliance with any executive orders that are current until those are, I guess, completely expired or no longer applicable. But I wanted to just bring that to your attention because for the next several months, we probably will be receiving other requests for one-time events. You'll notice that this is a single event on Friday, May 14th. Cassie will provide some more details about the, you know, I guess, any sort of measures they're going to take or precautions and or what this is entailing. But ultimately, you may recall that before the pandemic began, we were wanting to identify signature events. These would be very large scale events, kind of an all call-out. And then throughout the year, there would be other events that perhaps would be a little more self-contained and would not require as much public safety attention and staff's time. I believe that this particular one fits that bill. But with that, I'll just turn it over to Cassie and let her kind of give you some details.
Thank you, Brandon. So with this event this year, we're having to think outside the box for sure with the Boys and Girls Club. And this is going to be basically like a Jeep show and shine, not in competition with the Sheriff's Jeep Fest. And we have already talked to him and gotten his blessing and thumbs up on this event. But we're really kind of honing in on a lot of classic Jeeps. So our hope is that we have enough registered, that we would have one side of the park ride share as classic Jeeps and then one side as the souped-up, crazy cool Jeeps. We're hoping that this will be an attraction for people to come and see, but also really just kind of a friend raiser for us. Jeep shows or any kind of car shows don't make a ton of money, but we have a Jeep club that is helping us put this on, the brigades headed up by Jerry Greer. And they will kind of be helping us with the car show aspect, but also the next morning, they're going to be doing a car Jeep ride for the Boys and Girls Club, leaving from the Boys and Girls Club's location. And so this is really kind of the start of the event for Saturday as well, but we would only need the ride share for the one night. We will be looking at, if this is possible, to get a couple of food trucks, like local food trucks. We're hoping to have, if we can use both lots, to spread the cars out far enough where ample room for people to walk around, you know, see everybody, but still very socially distant. And then I do, I have talked with the company to get some porta-potties out there as well. So yeah, we're really excited about it and we think it'll be a good event just for the club, for Pickens County.
Thank you, Cassie. Counsel, I would entertain a motion to approve this request.
So moved. Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the request of the Boys and Girls Club to utilize the area at Lee Newton Park on May the 14th. Any further discussion by counsel? Any question? Cassie?
I do have one question, Mayor.
Right ahead.
That's not going to conflict with the farmer's market, or is there? Or that's on Friday? Okay, that's right. Y'all leaving from the boys club on Saturday. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you.
And Cassie, what times are y'all looking at? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, you're fine. We were looking at starting at four, having cars start showing up around four. We're going to be encouraging, like having the food trucks there, or also encouraging people to go eat on Main Street for dinner that evening, so hopefully wrapping up between seven and eight.
Any further questions for Cassie at this time? You have a motion and a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Cassie, you have an event. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Item F is consideration of request for reduced water rates. Counsel, I think you have a packet that includes these two requests. I would entertain a motion that we approve these requested reduced water rates for these individuals.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Counsel, I would entertain a motion that we go into executive session for discussing both real estate and legal.
So moved. Can we go into executive session?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 And Brandon, before we leave, please explain what we're doing for those who might want to stay on when we come back.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we'll be doing is obviously, we are not in person to go and convene together. So we will be silencing our devices and turning video off as well. The recording will continue. I will call the city clerk and mayor and council and city attorney. And we will discuss via conference the items. And then there'll be a determination if anything needs to be brought out of executive session for consideration. And then we will come out and I'll, we'll have the video continue recording. So with that, I will call each of y'all momentarily and those of y'all who want to stay on, you can, but we'll be going silent here right now.
Okay, I think that we're all back at this time. I'd entertain a motion that we go back into record session.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are back in session again. And our next item is committee reports. Development committee would be council members, Dr. Sunny Proctor and Kirk Bradfield.
Well, we got through one tonight, at least moved along down the road. And I've shared with the council that now that we've moved into this new era, there is already, you can already tell that there's, that they're coming, here they, they're coming. So we did have, we had some interesting conversations over the last week or so involving a couple of projects, one of which I think is possibly both will be great, but I guess they're a matter of record now, but one of them is a fixed-use project that would have some both potential rental and sellable units close to town. And I think it's based on the, let's just say the developer is well-prepared and has done his homework prior to presenting to us. And so I see it as an exciting prospect relates to the, one of the rezonings that we did a year or so ago for a property that was planned as an adult living property, maybe an assisted living, but no, everything was adult living. And it was subsidized federally, but that project did not work out for that developer. So this is another, another look at the same piece of land. And then very, very recently, we just had a very close, brief contact, I did Friday with a project in town that really too, a little too green for me to give much detail. But nonetheless, they're coming, they know the zoning has been lifted and that we have new ordinances. I think there's some anticipated pushback on some of our ordinances and some of those I think we may need to look at specifically and maybe even do some minor changes in wording of specifics, but as we move forward with those, I guess, even text changes now, we'll have to go through the entire process. And so we'll just be looking at those things. So I guess that's it for me.
Counsel Bradfield?
As mentioned by Dr. Proctor, there have been some meetings and discussions held with individuals recently. We have some meetings scheduled coming up in the next week or so, and it is imperative that we recognize the team at the city for what they've been able to accomplish and help us with. Mayor Lawrence, you understand that Lonnie and Shawna and that whole team that they have down there, they have done a phenomenal job helping us along the way. So the new developments that are coming in place are going by the new ordinances. As Dr. Proctor mentioned, there may be some revisions in the future. That's to be expected, but I appreciate all the work of the employees.
Agreed, and thank you. Next, we have Streets, Street and Parks Committee, that will be council members Ann Snaby and John Faust.
Well, we got some drawings back for the bathrooms up at Peace Park. It's going to look pretty promising. And then we've got some new zone for Doris Wigginton far as the bike courses. Do you want to fill them in on that, Brandon?
Yes, sir. We've solicited and received two proposals. And so you'll recall that during the planning retreat, we identified that Doris Wigginton may be a good candidate for a kind of a mountain bike trail system. We'd met with some representatives, Sorba, and we reached out to a couple of consultants, one of whom did a site visit and drafted up. Both proposals are under 5,000, so we're going to look at them. And I think there's about a $200 difference in between, so we're going to try to select the best and most qualified, both of whom are very qualified. So it's probably going to come down to if there's one little competitive edge beyond that of another and hopefully get a concept going that we can then scope out for some pricing and get something. pricing and get something going out there 2021.
I'm excited. Go ahead. I'm, I'm excited about the, the intergovernmental agreement with the city park to see kids playing ball up there again, for one thing. But speaking of ball, I'd like to also congratulate the Pickens County Nets for going to the Elite Eight and wish them the best there. That's exciting for, for Pickens County.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Great job.
Anything else on Streets and Parks at this time? Administrative Committee, council members Jim Looney and Ann Snaby.
There is a draft of the employee handbook, new employee handbook floating around. Ann and I, I, we've had it for a while and I've, I've reviewed it, I'm sure Ann has. I think it's something that council could expect to see for approval in steps, parts of it, rather than the whole big book at the same time. But I would, I would expect to see some, some progress in that very quickly. Staff did a wonderful job putting it together.
Very much so. Thanks to Stella and the staff there for, for doing that because she did do a great job and a continuation of adjusting the salaries and, and things that we're, we're having to make as kind of as we go because we haven't had some of these positions in the past that we had, had up front.
Thank you, Ann. Water, wastewater committee, council members John Faust and Dr. Sunny Proctor.
Well, where do I start? I mean, a lot of exciting stuff going on. We talked about the 136 partnership, which we also had already become another partnership with the county that, where we tied into the, their line, and, and that continues to be evaluated. We had a really, what I think was a very, a very good meeting a couple of Fridays ago. Mayor, myself, Brandon, Chris Stansel, Mike Hall, and Phil Dean met, and Phil Dean met. And we met with the Gilmer County Water Authority. And not only did we talk about these projects that we're talking about, we started scratching the surface on what the future looks like. You know, they're a, they're a, an authority, they're a for-profit, well, they're an authority independent of government. And they have all those planning, budgeting processes in place that those type of institutions do have. And so, they're looking at their three and five-year plan. And to be having conversations between them and us about how we want to be included or not in their five-year plan for specific things is really exciting. And, and so, that's really exciting. We got another meeting coming up, I think, this week with Turnip Seed, and I don't know the, all the details of that, it just haven't really gotten me invitation today, but, but just exciting stuff going on. Just want to thank all council, staff, simple things like employee handbooks that we talked about three, four, five years ago that are still just without really, really much notice or incrementally being put into place. And really exciting to see it come together. Glad to be a part of it.
Thank you, Sunny.
And I'm along with, with Sunny with all the new stuff coming and then with the crews working as hard and as safely as they have, I think, just everything, just thanks for working safe and, and working so hard to all our crews and all our staff. They've really done an outstanding job.
Thank you, sir. Police and Fire Committee, council members Kirk Raffield and Jim Looney.
In your package, you're, I think this came in a separate package today. Each member of council, you have a copy of the police and fire reports. Departments are staying plenty busy. And we are scheduling some meetings with our public safety folks, getting some ideas on the future. Hopefully, we can report some, some things to you soon on all of that. There, Brandon found the police report, Brandon, or Beverly won. I have them on there for you. Any questions? I may not have an answer, but I can certainly take them to the folks that, that do have
And we'll also ask Councilmember Kirk Raffield to weigh in on this.
As far as public safety, as Councilman Looney mentioned, we are meeting with the department heads in public safety to determine certain factors that affect them on a daily basis, such as their prioritization of items that are needed, whether they are short-term or long-term goals. So, I look forward to establishing those with the department heads and, and the staff that serve with them to make sure that we all have the same common goal per department. It's going to be good.
Thank you, Kirk.
Mr. Mayor, if I could use this as an opportunity just to, because Chief Lovell and Chief Oper are not on the Zoom call, there is no requirement, so I can't get on to them, but I would encourage you all individually, as your time allows, to just do an impromptu visit to look at the build-out at the new little complex area, the courtroom, EOC, training room, city manager's office, federal office, just, just kind of go and take a look at it. I think the contractor's doing a good job at them, and Matt and the team have kind of been overseeing it, trying to keep Andrew and Tanya out of there because they love to spend money on making sure we do it correctly. So, I think there's been some good decisions and ultimately coming along nicely. And I just encourage you to stop by because they're not here to tell you not to, so I'm just going to tell you to.
I will say that I do take a quick look down.
You're muted, Chef Steger.
Dave, you're muted. What the?
I would like to say that I did take a quick trip down there and I encourage you all to go, go take a look. It's a, it's a work in progress, but I think that what we're going to ultimately wind up with is going to be much more than what we in the beginning thought that it would So, we'll ask our finance director, Beverly Ragland, if she would.
In your packet, you will have the finance report that Lindsay does every month and does a fine job of it. General fund revenues were 672, 408. Expenditures were 325. Lost receipts came in at 132, TAVIT at 8408. The building department at 18,000. Water and sewer fund revenues for the month, 382. Expenditures were 232. Water receipts were 279. Sewer receipts, 54,000. Leachate, 20,000, and no cost of construction aid receipts. And I realize I did a horrible job of printing the SPOSS spreadsheets to PDFs, and I'll be glad to try again. But basically, SPOSS 2020 is coming in above projected. We projected it 65,000 a month, and we got 69, so that's still above. Anything above is a plus. Currently, we have a $475,000 balance. And in the 2020 SPOSS, there is a $280,000 balance. And if you recall, those monies were set aside for the sidewalk project. Is that correct, Brandon? Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Whitney. Well done. And last, but certainly not least on this, I'd like to ask Lonnie Warner to tell us about the, what's going on in the development department. But before we do that, I want to also tell you that Lonnie and I were at the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting, and he gave a great report to that chamber. And I was proud to be a representative of the city, listening to him talk about what we have coming in our, in not just our city, but in our, our county too. If you will, Lonnie.
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of February, we've had 14 building permits, four signed permits, 10 plan reviews, one pre-construction meeting, five pre-planning meetings, 109 building inspections, 10 soil erosion inspections, 13 business license renewals, 118 insurance license renewed, and six new business, business licenses.
Thank you, Lonnie. All wonderful. And at this point, I also want to express to all of, all of us here, and not just the ones that are here, but also to those who might look at this later that work for our city, that if you consider the magnitude of the work that we have in progress, not just in the development department, or not just in any single department, but as a whole, then I need to commend our city council for all of the, the planning and all of the work that has been done for so many and for such a long time. Now, Dr. Proctor spoke to the fact that some of this is now becoming a part of our everyday lives, and Brandon has told us upon occasion about the incremental way that he sees our city growing and expanding. But I also have to tell you that you make your mayor proud. Thank you all. And at this point, we have the, I think that, Brandon, are we going to do anything with police and fire other than what we've done?
I would just encourage you to bombard Chief Lovell and his office with unannounced visits.
It'd be a great question. And one of my favorite things is, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn for this evening. What a wonderful meeting.
I move.
And a second.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Second.
Goodnight, all.
Goodnight. Thank you.